This is the commission, the next duty is mandate. It's ten to be allowed for the commission. This could remind you, as I've done other witnesses, that this is not a trial, it's not a court of law. However, you have taken oath, that is similar to the oath taken in a court of law, in transportation over which will bring same consequences as those that follow transportation. All these requirements there, you understand? However, you are not on trial, you are not in a case. Thank you very much. Pet, before we start the commission, we'd like to know who you are? Names, what do you represent? And your position, what details as the chairman of the town planning committee?
Ah, okay, thank you. I'm councillor, I'm a councillor. I don't have a particular role. And I'm the chairperson of works and urban planning committee, which basically covers the works department, machinery, the trucks for city council, the motor vehicles, the roads and life divisions, and also urban planning.
So what does urban planning tell you?
Okay, urban planning entails the planning of various city councils all. It's residential, commercial, development control, partial control.
You have some experience in your own personal life, which is going to discover anything that you have?
Personal experience? I'm not a town planner, if that's what you're asking, yes.
You are, you just are appointed to be chairman?
Yes, we are asked to bring in our citizens, then the mayor, the CDM, and you are then brought into committees. Fellow councillors vote for chairperson, not the councillor.
Okay.
Yes.
Alright, let me bring you right from the beginning to an issue that is of major concern to Araray citizens. We have heard witnesses come and give evidence before this commission, over that. It is the proliferation of service stations in Araray residential areas. Have you received complaints about that?
Formerly, I haven't received any complaints, but I have a big video of taking me on Twitter regarding service station that are long agao voting up and down, which are on the local development plan, which was advertised and adopted by a city council.
In fact, I will bring you straight to that.
Okay.
But before you go to that,
Please.
Please assist this commission and convey to it the requirements for the installation of a service station.
Okay, with the service stations, our committee, all it does is guide the development, which is the permit. Then after that, EMA Zera, they also do their assessment before a service station is functional.
I will refer you to the question again, what are the requirements for the establishment of a service station? Which is, which falls into your remit as town planner, planning Araray?
Firstly, a service station should be approximately 1,000 feet meters. It should be in a municipal commercial zone. It should be also out of, there should be a need for a service station before it to be built.
Its relationship to ordinary residential areas?
Sorry, can you come again?
And with regards to residential areas, what is the relationship? What are the requirements of a service station with regards to residential areas?
In residential areas, a service station should be air service based, where there is no congestion or way to cause harm to the residents around it.
What sort of harm is a visit?
I would say maybe traffic, traffic way in and out of service station, if it's within residential areas, it causes a risk to children and ordinary civilians in that area.
Fuel is a highly flammable substance?
I agree.
What precautions are taken with regards to that point?
Those precautions are taken by EMA and Zera.
You are asking, when you give a permit,
Yes.
They surely that is on your checklist? In fact, what I'm trying to say is, contrary to the impression you may be trying to give, you do not have a stem other people's decisions. You are central as the city council, as the town planning division, in the decision making when it comes to the situation of a service station.
Yes, I agree.
Yes, so tell us.
Those are the things that we do take, is there a need, is it hazardous to the city, are there complaints?
The last person I had asked was referring to the substance itself, one which will easily catch fire and cause grievous damage if handled improperly. What precautions are required or are taken when the issuing of a permit for a service station is done by your committee?
Our committee, what it does is to allow for the development. The assessment for the area it is hazardous to the residents in all is done by EMA and Zera.
You do not, listen very carefully, carefully to the question. You do not concern yourself with that, is that what you're telling the commission?
No.
No, you don't.
Like I said previously, we look at the areas when these things come to committee, that if we do, we have side visits to go and look at the area where the service station is located, if it's visible, then it should be there.
I will refer you to my question again. With regards to the very substance that we are talking about,
Yes.
One which can cause grievous damage through fires and explosions. What is it that you take into account when a permit is being issued in a residential area with that?
It should if it is close to the houses, to residential houses.
What is the definition of close commission? How it is that those two service stations that I've referred you to, three, receive their permits from you when, from your own requirements, they do not meet the standards, they do not meet the requirements of the establishment of a service station?
First, I'll respond to the one on agao. The one on agao is provided for in the local development plan, which was advertised and advertised. They do not even come to the committee for us to make decision. The one on Cheshu and Lobo Shawa, we got a permit before I became the chairperson. Then there is one on...
West?
Western.
Near west and Sappu.
West and Sappu. I'm not sure about that. But the major challenge is that a property owner is allowed to change use of their area if they want to go commercial. And currently, we do not hear the law that stops them from doing that.
No, that's the most misleading statement you could make. Because when you change land use, there are certain considerations that are there. And you actually receive permission from authorities, which may be denied. Right?
Yes.
You understand that? So it is not correct to say there is no law preventing it. But let's move aside from that. Are you telling me that as the chairperson of the urban works and town planning committee, you are not aware of the circumstances surrounding the establishment of this service station that I've referred you to, which is along west road, near corner western Sappu? Is that what you're telling this commission?
I will have to check.
Let me ask you again. Are you telling this commission that as the chairperson of the responsible committee within council, you are not aware of the circumstances surrounding the establishment of the service station I'm referring you to?
Like I said, I will need to check, because they need sitting, I have made the hundred reports. I will need to check first before I mislead this commission, I will need to verify yourself.
From your response, the impression that arises is that there is no control in this field?
It's not that there is no control.
If there is control, can you tell us about it? You told us you do side visits.
Yes.
Did you do a side visit on that?
On this particular service station, I said I will need to confirm. I don't want to lie or to say the wrong thing, I will need to confirm. Because there are two things involved, there are service stations that come to the committee for the permits, and those that are provided for in the local development plans that are along the west use, they are processed by our technical.
So you are saying, you are saying there are so many service stations being constructed, that you do not recall this one I'm speaking?
No, there are many reports that we deal with.
I am referring to service stations. Are you listening carefully?
I am listening, but then I will not confirm or choose something that I'm not sure of.
The impression that arises is that you are aware of that service station. You are aware of the circumstances surrounding it. But it is a service station that does not meet legal requirements, therefore you want to avoid the question.
Why won't they avoid the question?
Because the service station's permit was given in an irregular fashion. That is why you don't avoid. In other cases?
Like I have said before, this particular saving that he keeps talking about, I will need to confirm firstly before I respond to it. Because I have a lot of reports, I don't want to say the wrong thing.
They're not being asked for the report, they're being asked about the knowledge, whether or not you are aware of that particular station?
I have seen the service station being constructed.
They are being asked about whether or not the existence of that service station?
The existence I know, but I wanted to know the conditions that I'm...
We didn't want, we didn't want, we didn't, yet we got there. Are you now telling us that you are aware of that service station?
I have seen it being constructed.
Are you aware?
Yes.
So you did it on purpose?
I saw it a couple of weeks back.
Did you ever visit that service station and do this, making rounds?
No.
No?
No.
So what, what way to go and check it?
No, I saw it as I was driving along west, not that I actually went into the premises to check anything.
But you just answered now, you said you went in there.
No, I said I saw this a couple of weeks back, I saw it driving past west, not that I went into the premises, no.
Question again, did you ever, as part of the duty, visit that particular service station? What were you then going to check in the reports?
If we had visited.
I don't know.
Like I said.
No, just, just follow the question, the question. You have been asked whether or not you visited, it took a long time to answer, it went by the chainage, you know?
In the contest that he was talking about, here's the town planning chair.
Listen very carefully, don't stop it. Listen very carefully, we're not going to answer for that. We asked whether or not you know that service station, we said there are too many of them, but later on the chair has said, you know, that's what you said. That's what you said.
In particular reference of what he was saying, that is what I explained.
No, answer the question.
Then you then asked me if I had seen this service station, yes, I have seen it, I drove past that road, I have seen it. But I have not gone into the premises or I have not gone onto the premises in the capacity as my committee should.
You know your entrance and your place, the knowledge, you know where the place is?
Yes, I know where the place is.
Do you remember as well going to check this place?
No.
What then were you going to check, what was going to check?
We were going to check on the owner, the sizes, where it was situated.
Question from both, when you asked whether you were in there to check, you said you might do it for me? You left to check out the reports?
Yes, I will have to check if it indeed came to the committee for the permit or if it was done before our...
If you visited with your other committee member, you will remember?
Yes, I will remember.
So do you remember going to remember?
No.
Have you ever paid for it?
No.
For the committee?
No.
So what were you checking, in your office?
I wanted to check for the report, if it was done during my tenure or when you got the permit.
I would advise you to answer the questions as they are asked. Because in due course, I might ask the commission if I that you are an evasive witness and desireless of telling me. Now, let's move. You have now said you have seen this service station. You have seen this service station. So don't nod, answer.
Yes.
Don't nod your head, you can't go.
Oh, okay, yes.
It does not meet the requirements as you have advised them to the commission. What is the problem?
If it doesn't meet the requirements according...
There is no, if you saw it, you saw that it's neighboring residential areas on three sides.
That kind.
You saw, you saw that it's in the middle of a residential area, did you not?
I only saw that it was construction way on. Like I didn't, I didn't check.
You didn't see houses neighboring it?
No waste there, just walls when you're driving along west, it's just two rows, maybe you see a school down the road.
You didn't see that it's in the middle of a residential place?
I know it's a residential area, but I didn't check.
Let me ask you again. Did you not see that it's in the middle of a residential area?
Yes, it's in the middle of a residential area.
And as a result, it does not meet the requirements that you have advised this commission of?
If you say so.
I am not saying so.
But I did notice that I didn't check for the neighbors, what's next to it. Yes, it's a residential area, but there are commercial uses in that particular area.
You want to deny?
So I don't know for this particular one, what the neighbors are.
You are, you want to deny that it's in the middle of a residential area?
No, I say this is a residential area, but I don't know the surroundings and the neighbors, whether it's a residential area or they are also using their facilities for something commercial. That's why I said, I didn't go into check.
How fast were you driving that you didn't see this?
On that particular direction, I don't know that.
But so fast that you didn't see, you didn't observe houses around it?
I have been honest, I didn't check for the neighbors or what's next to it.
What is clear to everyone listening here, man, is that you are precisely being the opposite. You are being dishonest.
I have no reason to be dishonest.
You have every reason because you want to cover up the corruption that must have occasioned or must have been behind the building of that service station in the middle of a residential area.
I am not covering up for corruption or for any harm.
So tell us its status vis a vis the requirements. You saw it, you saw the houses around it, tell us its status.
I have said this before, I will need to check the report, I do not want to assume or to speculate. I will need to check the report and go on site and see for myself.
But you didn't go on site yourself?
Like I said, I still need to check, maybe that permit was even done.
You didn't go on site yourself?
I did not.
It is in the middle of a residential area. It is less than 500 meters.
But remember, we have residential areas that are not mixed use. We have factories, that's why I'm still saying I need to check the report first.
I will tell you in advance, that when I do give my address to this commission, I will ask him to find that you were the most difficult candidate to play before it, who was not desirous of telling me the truth, who wanted to cover up corruption. How were you chosen as a councillor?
I was appointed, how? Like I said.
What is your background? I wouldn't have gone into this, but it is the manner in which you are clearly being dishonest before this.
I am not being dishonest, I am...
What is your background?
Of council or what?
Your own background, qualifications?
Well, I...
Have you been arrested before, I'm surprised if you haven't been for fraud or something? I'd be very surprised.
No.
Okay, so tell us your background.
Well, I did study owners and public administration, and I was also student at least, like...
No, no, when you say you studied government, did you study in class or studied in state?
Sorry?
When you say you studied owners, did you study in class or state?
Yes.
Yes, to what?
I did owners in public administration, and I also...
So what is degree?
Yes.
In what?
Owners in public administration.
From which university?
Use it.
What is the name of the qualification, degree?
The degree class.
The degree, what is it, the bachelor of science or the bachelor of...
It's owners in public administration. The one which they used to call college before.
That's what you did?
Yes.
What is that, the bachelor's?
Three.
No, is it a B or what is it called?
Owners, owners.
Is that what you put after your name? What you write on the bachelor's?
Sorry, I didn't get you.
You played me very softly, yes. I'm giving you some trouble. No. I want you to write your, just to say, you know, when you want to go to BA dinner, I'm going to put down the BA dinner. What you put after your name?
I'm not sure if it's what you're asking.
Is that what you put after your name?
My name?
Yes, you put your name, I can replace it, you put your name, then you put your bachelor's, is that how you put it?
Yes.
What you put?
Owners in public admin.
Where is P A?
I'm not sure why the university did that, that is H A T.
How many years?
Three years.
Or I'll ask those who are going to university, the same university, you know, again. Have you never seen anything? Have you never read the Bachelor of Science or what have you done? You said owners do not exist in university, is it the Bachelor of Science?
Yes.
Did you graduate? No, answer the question.
Yes.
You are already certificate in your home?
Yes.
It's obtained H A T.
My certificate?
Yeah, the degree certificate. Who is that?
I wasn't, college.
Can I give you?
Social, social sciences. The department, sorry, social sciences in the department.
Did you go to the university?
I did.
Can you write it down?
I did.
Well, I have written college name, but I must remark, if you want to give your, take your new qualifications there. Well, to be honest, chairman, at this rate, I'm doubting if what she has given us is a name, is really a name. These records that you're referring to, where are they?
The reports?
Yes.
In our planning department.
Where is that?
There, in the house.
Where is it?
In the city of Araray.
In the city of Araray?
Yes.
I'm going to do the unusual and ask the commission that it gives you time to continue to house to go and fetch the records.
Okay.
And bring them here before inspection.
Okay.
Let us move away from that. No, maybe also have interest to see this bachelor's. Left certificate, left form?
Yes.
Do you mind bringing it?
No, I don't mind.
Can you carry some further documents? Yes, yes. And choose can you take? Yes. I don't want to take it for the leisure, I don't want to take it for the office, I don't want to...
I may be twelve hours, I think.
Where do you stay?
I stay in one of your, but my mother keeps certificates in preside.
Preside?
Yes.
To what time do you want to?
As soon as I can.
Very well. Trust me. Now, the one... No, I'm not sure that you asked a question formally, who is appointed this person? Oh, yes, 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 thank you very much, thank you. Who appointed you?
Chairpersons are not appointed there.
As a councillor?
As a councillor, I was appointed by the CHOCO C partner.
And you mentioned something that you call PR?
Yes, proportional representation in local government.
Okay, you are a political activist? I will leave that. Now, the one common feature, the one common characteristic of most of the service stations that we've since brought to Araray is that they are in the middle of residential areas. Which ones have you visited yourself before the issuing of a permit?
That I remember, I visited one, which is along Enterprise Road. I also visited one in Kambusuma area, I'm not sure the name of the road. And I also visited one in Philadelphia.
And these are all in the middle of residential areas?
The one in Philadelphia, yes. But the one on Enterprise is mainly now of commercial use. So the neighbors are doing flowers, stuff like that.
How long have you been the councillor on this committee?
A year now.
How many service station permits have you issued out in Araray during your tenure?
From the top of my head, I'm not sure. Maybe six or seven. Maybe six or seven.
I think that you've been very conservative with your figures, given the number of service stations that we've since brought.
Yes, because, um, there are those service stations that come to commit for payment. And there are those that are allowed by the the regional town planning. So those particular ones, they do not come to commit for payments. They are given payments by the planning department.
The planning department follows under your provision?
Yes.
These are people for whom you provide oversight?
I agree.
How is it then that they can issue permits for service station without your oversight law?
If it's allowed in the regional town planning act, they can do so. The ones that come to commit are the ones that need special consent.
There is no provision in the regional in town planning act that says you cannot provide oversight for work that is within your division. Quite the opposite. There is a law which ensures your providing oversight is the city council. Your work, sir.
To some extent.
What do you mean to some extent?
Well, initially, when you become a councillor, you get a manual handbook from the chamber secretary and you're told what you can and what you cannot do. So when you are...
You told this commission that you are responsible for Harare's town planning. Do you want to change this, councillor?
No, but I want to explain where you're coming from.
No, just answer my questions. You told this commission that you are responsible for Harare's town planning.
Yes.
This surely includes the situation of service stations?
Unfortunately, I only deal with things that come in reports to my committee.
You have not answered my question. My question is, this surely includes the situation of patrol stations, service stations?
Okay.
What do you mean okay?
Um...
Are you not, are you not aware of that?
I am aware.
Are you aware?
Yes, I am aware.
Very well. How is it then that there are service stations that should not bother yourselves with providing oversight?
It's not that I do not bother myself, but like I said before, the issues that I deal with are issues that come to committee through the reports.
Every service station should come to you because you are responsible for town planning.
If you put it like that, they need, we need...
I'm not putting it like that, I'm saying what should be happening in a metropolitan city and it is happening here, it is your responsibility. Do you not agree?
What I know is I deal with reports that come to the committee.
Yes, I'm not...
If, if something...
I'm not referring to what you deal with because you may be lazy, you may be incompetent, I am dealing with your duties.
Like I said before, when you become councillors, you get a manual handbook of your duties, where you start and where you stop.
Is it your evidence before this commission then that as far as your consent, you're not responsible for other service stations, only those that are brought to your attention?
Answer the question.
I'm not sure.
You're sure of what?
Of what you want me to say?
There is the main difficulty for it.
Yes, but I explained before.
It is your responsibility. And I'm saying to you, are you telling this commission that you are not responsible for service stations that are not brought to you as reports? You only deal with those that come to you.
What is the answer?
I don't have one.
Sorry?
I don't have an answer to that.
So you're afraid what you're supposed to say, to all of them? Sorry? Respond.
I do not have response to that.
Do you understand the question, it's in two parts?
Yes, I understand. But, uh, the way, the way it's, it's, it's being framed is, is the part that I'm not sure of.
But you understand it?
Yes, I understand what you're saying.
Answer it. You have no answers?
No.
Record that you have no answers, that's a great mistake.
So what we have on record here is that there is no oversight within Harare City Council when it comes to the construction of service stations.
First, answer to that.
There is to some extent, like I've said before. The things that I have oversight for is the things that are brought to me, the things that I am made aware of. Or maybe instance, uh, this, uh, particular service station that it's referring to, where I thereby then ask the director, the consent director for a full report on what transpired and the implications.
Now, you saw a service station along this road, which clearly violates all the legal requirements of establishment of a of a service station. And you did not follow this matter. Let's be a little bit...
No, I have asked the department to give us a report, an update on these service stations and how best we can care the way they are spouting.
I am referring to the particular service station that you saw, which clearly violates all the regulations pertaining to the establishment of service station.
When I asked for a quality trial for all the service stations...
You have answered the question. You did not follow up that particular service station.
I followed up on that service station in others. All the new ones that have been constructed.
When did you do that?
Uh, it's been two or four months.
Eighteen two months? You have not received a response from your officers?
No, we don't yet, the report is not.
Are you not concerned that whilst your officers have not given you your reports, this service station is actually being built and will be complete soon?
The issue of the service station is a major concern to us.
Even though you have not answered the question, I will move on because it is quite clear in your mode of giving evidence and you do not want to answer the question. What have you done about it? And before you answer that question, when I initially asked you if you don't received any complaints about it, you say no. You are not aware of any complaints surrounding service stations?
Yes.
Now you are telling, now you are telling us that it is a cause for concern?
No, like I indicated previously, I have not formally received the reports. But I had people take me on that particular issue on Twitter, when people were complaining that there are three service stations along Paka Road.
A witness, Carol Moncrief, gave evidence here. She says, apart from the one in Agai, there are five more service stations in the Avondale area, which already has nine service stations within a one twenty-five kilometer radius. And you have approved them. What is your comment to that?
Some of these service stations were approved by the committee. And some of them falls under the local development plan.
Are you saying that you have not approved any?
No, some. Like I indicated, some.
You have not approved?
Yes.
What is this local development plan? Is it such plan that it disregards the proximity of proposed service stations to residential areas?
No, the local development plan sometimes brings in, uh, new uses. And in this particular one, it then gave into the uh, commercial means used on on Agai Road in Avondale. So on that particular plan, there are actually areas that are earmarked for service stations on a plan.
Now, we have a residential area?
Yes.
Along Agai. And at the corner of that residential area, where there used to be a residential house, there is now a service station? Right?
Yes.
Are you telling us that it is because of this local development plan?
On Agai Road, two of them is the local development.
I am speaking to the one at the corner of Agai and West.
I think I did indicate previously that I will need to check the reports first before I speak about it.
But this is an issue that has been discussed. The resident I'm speaking about wrote to yourself to Mr. Chabatama?
Unfortunately, um, I was not given that complaint.
The director of works?
Yes.
You are telling this commission that you are unaware of this complaint relating to that?
I am not aware of it.
As far as your consent, there are no complaints relating to that construction?
Like I said, the co- the complaints that I am aware of...
I am asking you a direct question. Are you suggesting that there are no complaints at all that have been brought to your office? That is...
None have been brought to my attention formally by people or by the directors.
Your committee has not discussed any?
No, we have discussed, I've seen that chain on, on Twitter, we have discussed that issue for me.
But there have been no formal reports to yourself as a committee?
No.
Chairman, I think that we the commission would not be able to carry out this work properly if the behavior exhibited by this witness is allowed to go unchecked. I'll therefore suggest that we adjourn uh, her evidence and move on to other issues while she goes to the city council to collect her minutes for the past year and the information that you refer to and including the development plan.
You understand?
Yes.
So there is this important work that's happening, you let me bring us...
Okay.
That is your qualifications and your experience in also a document relating to cluster houses and related to the company's... You are very aware?
Sorry?
Cluster houses?
The policy?
Yes.
Uh, it's not yet done, our cluster housing policy.
Not yet done?
Yes, we are working on a cluster housing policy, it's not done yet, we are still working on it.
You are still working on it, but the cluster houses are actually being built right now?
Yes, according to the regional management policy.
Right, okay. Uh, we also need to vote from directors that follow the equipment, the director of works.
Yes.
Chabatama? After your evidence, I would propose to the commission that they recall Chabatama to bring documented evidence relating to the reports they give to you. Number two?
Yes.
Number two. We also require, as I've indicated to you, the information of all the service stations that were brought down. And should we find that there is information that is not being brought in due course, I would ask the commission to find that you are in contempt of the council. And recommend your prosecution or...
Um, reports done by the directors that go under my committee in all the service stations that I have gotten payments whilst I was in office.
Development work plan?
Yes.
Minutes of all your committee meetings? All of them? This should be necessary to you. Thank you, Chair. Is the local development plan maybe going to clarify, is there one for the whole city or is it area specific?
No, our local development plan is area specific. The one for the whole city is the master plan.
Could you bring the master plan as well?
It's not done yet.
So the local development plan, I asked this because there's an issue we need to pick up with you about a service station that goes based on a local development plan from nineteen fifty-one. So could you have to borrow two master plans, there are local development plans?
Okay.
Bring the information pertaining to the construction of a huge commercial complex?
Commercial complex?
I think it's the Institute of Chartered Accountants, I think, yes. Along Alps.
Sorry, along?
Alps. You should know it, it poses a huge commercial period, you must have discussed. I think you have. Are you that's right, now, listen?
Um, you have just told the commission that our seat of Paraguay has not yet been mastered. Are you aware that on the first of November, this excellence will announce a call to action for compromise to service delivery, where all the ninety-two local authorities in the country, including Harare, were given a deadline of thirty of June twenty twenty-four to come up with their master plans?
Yes, I am aware and we are currently working on our master plan. We are currently working on it.
So you have not complied with the deadline that was given?
Yes, unfortunately, we faced issues with press that delayed us getting our master plan.
But anything very much expected to be here, this is eleven o'clock, you need to be here by what time?
One.
One o'clock.
Okay.
One. Can you read it? Well, then, resume, resume, and stop us.